Jeff, I know you've been waiting patiently. We move on to item J, discussion town roofs. So, thank you for your patience, sir.
Mayor, I think it's important to just give a preamble that the Joint Building Committee and Joint Facilities has done remarkable work over the years, which we had hoped would lead to a referendum on roofs in addition to roads this year. I know it was a profound disappointment to everybody. I would just like to, there are so many members that work so hard, and Jeff Leonowitz, the Deputy Director of Public Works, has been the liaison to the committee. And again, I think we always talk about, well, if you hit a wall, there's, you know, other paths you can take. There's more than one way to skin a cat. So even though we were unable to do the referendum this year and were hopeful to do it next year, I would just like to commend Donna Susak for her tireless efforts, her advocacy, and her expertise on this subject that she didn't give up. I know how disappointed she was, and I share that disappointment. One of the main reasons we brought Jeff on board and facility was to really do an assessment of buildings, of roofs, to have a long-range plan, and we've made remarkable progress all over town in those efforts. But Donna didn't stop. She worked towards this. This is going to be a great primer on where we are or where we aren't, and other ways to get these roofs addressed before, and, you know, perhaps during, or we always talk about concurrent paths with the referendum next year. So I just wanted to thank her. I have limited time left, and I just wanted to commend her. She is tireless in this. She is such an advocate. She doesn't give up. And I just wanted to thank her publicly for all of the work she's done on this. I don't know if I'd get another opportunity to single her out for these, the exhaustive efforts that she puts in, not only on the council, but on this committee, and then all the other things she does with such professionalism, such commitment and love of the town. And I just felt compelled to say that. We sent this PowerPoint out. With that, Jeff has done an awful lot of work working with the committee too, and I will turn it over to him for his presentation.
Jeff, welcome. Thank you for hanging in there. If you wouldn't mind just your name and title, then the floor is yours, sir.
Not a problem, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jeff Leonowitz. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works Operations. You know, the Joint Facilities Committee has spent a lot of time really focusing in on where we are, where we want to go, and I think a lot of emphasis has been on the roofs, especially with the elementary schools. As you know, we have Henry Barnard Phase 3 currently in action. It's nearing completion, and it will be finishing up shortly. Let me share my screen. I'll get the PowerPoint presentation loaded up, and we'll run through what the Joint Facilities Committee has asked to present. See, can everybody see this now?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
So this is the roof management plan. I know there was a lot of emphasis, like the town manager has put in about, you know, referendum, and, you know, things didn't really pan out with what's going on in the world. So these are just some different ideas that, I guess, as a primer, I know, I'm going to borrow that phrase. It's a great way to kind of get the conversation going and see where we were, how we've been, and where we could go. You know, this is just kind of going over, you know, who's presenting, you know. Donald, I believe, is still on the line with us, and then, you know, myself, and kind of the topics that this presentation is going to cover. Industry averages, what roof condition analysis is, much like with the roads referendum, we have a pavement management index that everybody likes to refer to. Very similar thing where we kind of analyze and give it a rating. What's the history with roofs across town, our current strategy, a proposed roof management plan. This is kind of working outside of that referendum idea with CIP. You know, how I'm explaining this could be a potential timeline and some funding scenarios. So I just wanted to touch on, you know, we have seven different roofing systems across town, and we have a very extensive portfolio on top of a very extensive building portfolio. The long and the short is roofing is about a 20-year, 25-year asset to a facility. It's always in that realm of being changed at about that 25-year mark. With this slide showing just like the different systems and where we could find them across our building portfolio across town. You know, this goes into the roofing condition analysis, you know, rating from excellent to poor. Poor being end-of-life, not worth investing. Excellent being brand-new, fair is right in the middle of the road. That's something that's still a usable asset. You can invest in it wisely and extend life or preserve it for, you know, more service. There's a lot involved with the roofing. That's why we have the five grades, much like a pavement index, you know, depending on how it wears over time and what it's exposed to. So this is the roofing, the actual condition of 23 facilities across town. These facilities were kind of identified as priority targets, depending on their programming, town functions, their level of importance. Not that, not all buildings are important, but these buildings, you know, they have a lot to do with their day-to-day operation, heavily programmed, very important to governmental and, you know, public school functions. So, you know, all these facilities play a very interesting role, and they can be critically affected if, you know, they have, you know, any issues that could prolong their ability to stay open or, you know, minimize or, you know, change the way, you know, we do business if there's a building interruption because of their, you know, role in the municipality. This index is kind of just going over where we are as a facilities management professional. I like to see things between the good to fair. This is kind of showing our portfolio of these 23 sites, with the exception of the two that are in the excellent being the new high school and the new roofs at Henry Barnard. We are kind of favoring the poor end of the management index. When you're at a poor end, you're at an end-of-life. That end-of-life is, you know, we're really in a point where we need to invest in replacement, and there's nothing to do to really prolong its serviceability. So it's gone. Now you're really trying to focus on how we're going to get this roof replaced. There's really nothing to do fixing at that point. For me, I prefer to see between good to fair because that positions us in a strong place to budget for, you know, smart changings and, you know, gives you more time to work within that fair range. You have about seven, 12 years, which gives you a lot more flexibility with how you can manage and plan your resources and assets. So it looks a little tough on this slide leaning on the poor side, but, you know, there's ways to address this creatively. Kind of give a brief overview of, you know, DPW and, you know, our property portfolio. Back in 2009, the Department of Public Works assumed responsibility for all the DOE properties. So at that time, 13 sites totaling over 1 million square feet of building space, which is a really huge segment of our current, you know, portfolio that we manage. Out of that building portfolio, there's over 1 million square feet of roof just on those 13 properties. So, I mean, if you think about 1 million square feet, that is roughly the old Hallmark building in just roofing. It's an amazing thing to try to comprehend, and then 900,000 square feet of this, you know, being, you know, from Board of Ed properties. There's so much roof across town. There's a lot to do. The school, you know, some of the six elementary schools in the Eagle Academy account for 400,000 square feet of roofing in that portfolio. So these numbers are just there to just kind of show like how much there is to do, and, you know, it's kind of, I think, putting a number to it kind of just kind of puts, you know, a different kind of layer of emphasis on, you know, what does it mean to do roofing in Enfield? So this is, you know, kind of going over our current strategy. So right now, we're roofing at pre-referendum limits, and it's taking about three years to complete an elementary school. Each phase, you know, is impacted. So there's inflationary cost adjustments, there's mobilization. So our pre-referendum dollar doesn't always buy as much roofing as the year prior. So, you know, in our approach, a single CIP project model, it's going to take us 18-plus years to finish all the remaining primary elementary schools, which when I talked about further, or excuse me, earlier, the average roof age is 20 to 25 years. So this is kind of like one of those situations where it's very difficult to dig out of our hole where we are at the moment at this strategy. And then kind of projecting forward in the next 15 years, there's over $21 million of roof replacement needs in the town. Now, that's going to be, you know, the new high school, you know, is about five years old. In 15 years, that roof's going to be 20 years old. So these are some substantial roofing investments that we're going to have on the horizon. And I'm kind of looking at, you know, what can we do creatively to dig us out and, you know, move forward and get a good solid plan in place? Another thing that people don't always talk about is, you know, what do we expense every year to, you know, fix leaks on poor roofs? $62,000 a year in direct cost to a vendor. This does not include costs from leak damages, and for example, repairing the interior ceiling, replacing lighting fixtures, cleaning and drying carpets, repairing alarm systems, having the fire marshals come in and all the other things that are associated. That $62,000 a year is just what we pay a vendor on average. Those, there's lots of soft costs that are a little bit harder to look at, but one example was last year, we had an issue at a facility, and with overtime and bringing on alarm vendors, we spent about $2,000 on our costs, not on top of what we paid for the roofing repairs. So there's a lot of things, you know, managing a portfolio that's in need. You spend a lot of money and expenses. So what I'm proposing here is a very aggressive six-year, six-years of construction. It's a very aggressive CIP approach in this particular plan to address priority targets. And I just want to emphasize, you know, priority target, you know, is a facility that if shut down will displace people, programming, and limit town services for an extended period of time. And, you know, I think the schools with our spacing requirements in our current health pandemic is, you know, very critical to kind of look at what we could do. These structures and facilities are very important to our town and how we operate day-to-day, and that's why I assign them as priority targets. To do this, multiple CIP roof projects per year will be kind of running concurrently. So there will be municipal facilities, you know, being invested in, whether it's preservation or complete replacement on top of, you know, school facilities being done. So it's a six-year plan where Enfield becomes more or less the roofing capital in the north-central area of Connecticut. We're going to be doing a lot of roofs in this particular plan I'm proposing. You know, on top of that, you know, the grants that we get from doing school roofs, we're eligible at the 20-year mark to get a reimbursement through a grant from the state. These grants would have to be targeted to be put into the sinking fund for the Board of Ed to really kind of, you know, be priming that replacement schedule for future Board of Ed properties. Municipal facilities account would also need focused investment. That account would be used to build up money for future roofing jobs, especially large municipal properties such as Yalcorn and the Annex. These are very large roofs that we're, you know, we're going to need to do something on in the replacement category in the not-too-distant future. You know, and with this aggressive strategy, there are some funding scenarios, and, you know, there's always things that we have to kind of look at, you know. It can affect the mill rate and/or, you know, other CIP projects. So it's something that, you know, I really hope that we just kind of prime the bulb on, you know, what we do with roofs here. And, you know, what I'm suggesting for, you know, Board of Education properties is for the first year to get this plan going, and I have a slide later on how this kind of works with the money moving around with everything getting funded. But, you know, CIP is going to be needed at two years for two CIP projects consecutively. The problem with a $670,000 rough limit is it doesn't really get you much traction in a roof. You're not really getting a lot of square footage. Henry Barnard Phase 3, that roof is, in its entirety, we're going to replace 60,000 square feet in three years, which is kind of tough. When you do these segments, you know, you're paying for inflation and mobilization, which really just kind of eat up things. And then, you know, things change. You have to punch up the drawing documents. There's all these little costs that keep driving that cost up year over. And it's just, it's just a tough position, but it's something that we have to do. It's whether it's regulated by the state, you know, building department. Everything has to be current when you do that bill that year. So what I'm proposing is, you know, again, two CIP projects funded two years in a row before we actually do any roofing, and that's to get that magic $1.34 million, you know, estimated. So that initial construction year would be a $2.6 million spend just for those DOE sites. This is a large number, and I'm anticipating if this is something that we were interested in doing, our construction year would be 2022. All the school reimbursements would be funding the DOE sinking fund. So I know, I think traditionally or before in the past, they're used to offset some of the other ways that we are funding school roofs, but we're going to have to kind of put cash upfront and then take that reinvestment money, the grant money from the state, and set that aside to kind of prime the bulb for the next roof replacement. And then on top of this, we're also going to have to do some kind of steady catch-up allocations to the sinking fund to really get that money going, and there's quite a bit. But the good thing is there's a potential of $9 million in reimbursement from the state in six years. So you're setting aside a chunk of money, but, you know, right now from the historical averages, we're getting about 70% reimbursement on our spend. So, you know, $9 million, that is 78%, so, you know, it's not too bad. Kind of going over this with this focused investment, this aggressive approach. By the time we're in fiscal year 2030, there's a potential for a $2 million nest egg in the DOE sinking fund. Why is this important? It's kind of approached about, you know, the high school. And I don't even want to talk about JFK, but, you know, add 20 years from its completion date of '22, it's like six, seven years behind the high school. So it's just these, trying to get ourselves some cash ready to go so we can invest instead of doing whole entire roofs at one time. We can do smart segments, and I think I'll be preaching a smart segment approach for a lot of things going forward. In this plan, it would address over 436,000 square feet of roof, and it would be replaced on these sites. So in six years, that's a lot of roof in a very short period of time. But in the initial kind of assessment, the elementary schools that we have, and they're at end-of-life, they're in a poor condition. So we're in that phase where it's not comfortable to invest in kind of patching it along. It's where we really need to get into that replacement phase. And it's municipal properties, you know, are always interesting. They're a little bit easier, and we have things in the works currently. Senior Center and Central Library, I have the ability in this year's budget, do some work that's going to be smart investment to preserve these properties. These roofing systems are in overall fair condition. They're worth investing in, and we're going to be doing some things now to, you know, prolong and extend our service life. In fiscal year '22, Enfield Police Department, I'm targeting that facility to be replaced in its entirety. Again, it's a critical piece of our infrastructure. 911 Communications is out of there. Obviously, the Police Department Ops are out of there. A facility like that being troubled with a roof replacement that we can't manage because it fails or something, just puts too much of an impact on the town and how we'd have to try to, you know, move things around. So things like this, these are why I kind of like always say priority targets and kind of my thought pass, the amount of disruption that it would cause if we had to, you know, do something for construction unexpectedly would just be a little bit of a heartburn for us to look at. And then in fiscal year '23, Alcorn and the Annex, the largest roofs in the municipal, you know, portfolio. They're old Board of Ed properties. We're using them for other things. But these roofs on whole are exceeding our limits of the referendum to replace the roof in its entirety. So I'm, you know, suggesting at this point that we put some very significant preservation in to try to get us some time so we can save and do some smart replacements, which I believe is the right thing to do, and we have the ability to do in this particular way. Those roofs are built, you know, they can be fixed to kind of get them to move forward a little bit longer. Fiscal year '24 would be a partial roof replacement at the Department of Public Works. There's over 40,000 square feet here at Moody Road. It's not all in bad condition. A lot of it's still in really good shape that it'd be smart to invest in. There's one area that is really candidate for replacement. So, you know, this is why I say replace, preserve, and again, with municipal properties, they're just overall smaller. They're easier to replace. They fall well within our traditional CIP budgets. They're just more easy to work with. You start getting these larger roofs, especially these big flat roofs on the schools, they just get a little bit outside that pre-referendum window that we work in. And then in 2025, Town Hall, same thing, you know, it's going to be 20 years at that point. And, you know, what Town Hall does with the amount of programming and council chambers and just kind of like a real big important piece of our town structure, it's just 20 years. I would feel comfortable just to replace it and just move on with it. It's a shingle product. You're not really going to have many options for preserving that property and that roofing system. And I, this is kind of the big one that I look at, you know, CIP funding required. What I have is, you know, the fiscal year we're in and the construction year, being that half-year off in July where our fiscal year is and where we are in the actual calendar year, I think it's sometimes easier for, you know, people like myself kind of see where we line up after that July 1 mark. All in all, this is kind of looking at a 10-year plan, six years of construction, like I said in the beginning. And the first year being, you know, this year, our construction year, our fiscal year '21, we have money already set aside for work at the library and the senior center to preserve these roofing systems and other related items. You know, that's a smart investment that we're working on now. The next fiscal year in '22, be our construction year '21, I talked about those two independent DOE CIP funds, HMS Phase 1 and Eli Phase 1. I'm trying to save money up for that 1.3 so we can get some very good roofing movement. And why is that important? Because it's really about the size of the roof that we're going to change that. I feel that we can leverage a better price and more coverage, plus our reimbursement from the state is going to be really key to priming that bulb for, you know, full roof replacements. Because again, I was saying that it's an 18-year window in our current model. That's a very tough position to be in, trying to get ourselves out of that 18-year replacement window for six schools that we still have left to do. We're going to be walking out of that and then walking right into the next one where we left off without counting the high school or the middle school. Those are very large groups. Again, you know, we talked about the Police Department. That is, I'm projecting, you know, be about $300,000 in that year. Again, the type of that facility, it's well under their traditional referendum limit. It's just too much to do. It's a shingle product. It's just very wise at this time. It's about 26 years old. Just get rid of it, change it out, and, you know, we're good to go with the Police Department. Moving into fiscal year '23, you start seeing a lot of stuff kind of going on. We have the Alcorn Preservation Repair, the Annex Preservation Repair, the Pearl Street Preservation, and then the first phase, you know, we have that construction year '22, the fiscal year '23. We, that July 1 is going to be the big year. A lot of that movement's going to go on those two schools. We'll have that $1.3 million in this plan, and, you know, on top of our contributions to our sinking fund, these numbers kind of look at, you know, how am I going to finance all this information? Because, you know, it's looking like we're putting out almost $5 million in CIP funding on top of, you know, another $5 million between DOE and municipal sinking funds. It's just a lot to look at. So I'm using that reimbursement money really to prime the bulb on these Board of Ed properties just because they're so cost-prohibitive right now. Going into the sinking fund, our sinking fund on top of our allocations are going to pay for our continued reinvestment in other properties on the Board of Ed side. And again, municipal properties are just going to kind of keep carrying along on that CIP projection. They're well within our traditional limits, and we're also going to be funding the municipal sinking, municipal facilities fund to really target those large roofs like Alcorn and Annex where we're very much outside of our range of pre-referendum spending for section replacement. You know, moving into, you know, fiscal year '24, construction year '23, you know, we're going into DPW preservation and the partial replacement. Preservation's a big thing. We still have a lot of roofs in our portfolio that we're falling in that, you know, good-to-fair category. It's a good time to invest at them at these target points where we can just, you know, really extend the life out of them. I can't guarantee how long it's going to go, but, you know, it's industry can see like seven-plus years of additional useful life out of these things when you put a little bit of extra capital investment in it through different materials and processes they have available nowadays. And again, we're at our final stage of HMS and Eli, the second phase. This would be completing the whole roof, and this would also be including those additions at this point, those additions that we put on back in 2002, 2004. They hit their 20-year mark, so it would be eligible for reimbursement, reimbursement, excuse me, from the state at that 70%. And again, that reimbursement money really, you know, primes the pot for these school roofs because of the cost of replacing some of these school roofs are close to, on average, it's about, you know, $2 million per school with what we're spending and what we're seeing at the moment at our levels. So it just takes a lot of this reimbursement money on top of our annual sinking fund allocation to the Board of Ed to just keep moving through these six schools to get us out of that 18-year window. And, you know, 2005, the schedule continues on. Once we get out of Eli and that HMS replacement, we have enough money put in where we're not changing phases of a roof. All the roofs, including the additions, are going to be in the eligible window for reimbursement from the state. We're just changing the whole roof in one summer. We're getting in, we're getting out, and we're just completed. And that's where we're going to really need to be to start saving some money for the future. And then, you know, we just kind of march down the line based on the age of the roof and their condition when we have this condition analysis. I glossed over that, and I do apologize about how we came with this condition index. I'd be happy to talk about that at the end or if anybody asks questions about it. And, you know, again, we're doing full replacements. We're doing Harkman the next year, Stowe, Crandall. And while all these schools are getting replaced, you know, we're doing other things across town on our municipal structures, like our preservation techniques, Eli Whitney, and HMS really kind of start our ability to have the money to reinvest and do full replacements. But, you know, on the good side, it's $10 million of funding with state reinvestment of, excuse me, a reimbursement of, you know, $9 million. So, you know, in total, you know, we're going to spend $12 million in roofs, but the state's going to be giving us, we're eligible. I don't want to say me, but at this current, you know, reimbursement level that we've seen from the state, $9 million of it is eligible reimbursement. So it's not too bad when you look at it, and it's a lot. It's a lot of information in a short period of time. And I'm happy to try to answer any question that anybody has. I didn't, you know, forget any of these roofs. Some roofs were higher priorities than others. Again, I was kind of focusing in a six-year construction plan and a 10-year savings window and, you know, looking at where we're going to be. These are also roofs that are still in our portfolio that we manage that are still critical to how we operate, but the business disruption isn't necessarily as bad as some of the other facilities. You know, again, when you start displacing large amounts of people, it gets very logistically complicated on how you're going to house, you know, a classroom or something in another location or current situation. So it's not that, you know, we didn't overlook these things. Again, you know, their replacement cost, preservations. When you see the total replacement cost, these roofs fall well under our traditional CIP pre-referendum limits. So these are a little bit more easy to digest and kind of really wrap our heads around. And the roofing ages, they're kind of at that point where we can still, again, you know, target some preservation on them. We still have that, you know, lifespan where we can do something with it before we start getting into that real end-of-life failure scenario of a roofing system where we have complete seam splitting and other things that are just not effective to fix at that point. Kind of explaining this, and, you know, again, we referred to that condition analysis. Why were these chosen? So the list was compiled by the town, you know, with a roofing survey analysis. We used data to verify roof ages from the building department. You know, we brought on a roofing expert. I, myself, the roofing expert in our buildings and ground crews, we went out to use every single roof across town, and we investigated using non-destructive methods, and that's pretty much everything from cutting a hole in the roof and seeing it. We used cameras, infrared, you name something that actually put a hole in a building. We did try really look at how it's deteriorating, where we think it's going to, you know, be the ones that we want to really focus on first, who can wait? And again, the order was kind of by service life and deterioration extent, you know. The service life that we're anticipating, the deterioration that we saw during the condition gathering is really kind of looking at our factors of this, why I'm proposing these through the Joint Facilities Committee, why these targets should be addressed, and, you know, who comes first and reasons why. And again, we spent a lot of time going across town. We spent the whole fall season going through everything, looking again at every building, every single inch. I think I saw more roofing in that, you know, 12-week window than I have in quite some time. So it was a very good lesson and exercise for us. The order of importance, again, the list is priority based on the overall condition and the failure of a roofing system and the impact of operations and business disruption. Again, you know, business disruption is huge, especially now in our health situation with our pandemic ongoing. Space is at a premium. Losing that type of square footage, it'd be very difficult to try to manage that logistically and where we're going to, you know, keep us running and what we're going to do. You know, what's interesting with this plan is a lot of the major roofing replacements and preservations happening in a six-year window. So again, I was talking about six schools in an 18-plus-year window. This is addressing 11 facilities in six years. So it's quite a bit, and it's... And it's over uh almost seven hundred thousand square feet of uh roof being preserved or replaced, which is you know, quite quite a bit of roofing when I talk about, uh, you know, a little over a million square feet in our total roofing portfolio. So this is a very aggressive plan to to kind of uh, you know, get to where we'd like to be in an ideal state. And then again, you know, no plans come without, you know, funding and how how we're gonna do it and and, you know, ways to get there. Uh, so this, again, I'm prefacing this is, you know, a without a referendum. It's a CIP, a very aggressive CIP approach. Um, and you know, multiple uh CIP projects are gonna be funded at the same time. It's gonna be a very heavy six-year uh in this plan of roof construction. Uh, a lot of roofing activity in town of Enfield. Everybody will know that will be the best at roofs in that window. This aggressive approach, we, you know, is gonna do one of two things. It's either gonna limit other CIP projects, which is the unfortunate, you know, reality that we have to look at, or raise the mill rate. So there's always that kind of uh cost benefit of what happens when when you put that kind of money upfront, what it affects going down the road on a CIP uh platform. On on this slide, you know, talking about, you know, the mill rate, uh, I that's always something that we'd like to keep an eye on. Um, just in this fiscal year twenty-one, eight point four million dollars of CIP was uh delayed, uh that DPW uh post. Um, two million of it, which was uh for roof um roofing. It's it's quite a bit a lot, you know, for for roofs and and everything else. Uh, this was done, you know, to keep the the year flat and, you know, and that's, you know, it's it is, it is where we are. And uh, you know, to address um these concerns, uh, the the two million for roofs and the other deferred projects, it'd be a two point nine mil in uh two, yeah, two point nine uh mils to, you know, to get that that tax base, that revenue to to fund CIP uh that was deferred in the fiscal year. When we get into the next fiscal year, uh delayed CIP from this fiscal year, it just doesn't go away. So you delayed it one year, that CIP is still there. It's still something you're gonna have to address down the road. So delayed CIP from twenty-one is gonna just kind of come on with us to twenty-two. On top of, you know, things we're projecting for twenty-two. And there's a a potential of sixteen million in requests for fiscal year twenty-two. So there's, there's a lot going on. Um, that's not just roofing related. Um, these totals don't include um what I'm proposing in this particular plan that's addressing the roofs, um, nor does it include um the costs associated with the vehicle replacement plan, uh which is just, you know, changing our cruisers or or police vehicles EMS. Delaying the VRP does have effects, you know, it 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 affects the replacement schedule of town vehicles, including EMS and uh the police department. So there's, there's some things to consider. Um, and you know, no increases in the mill rate, you know, without increasing uh the mill rate for this aggressive uh plan uh approaching roofing in a a very aggressive CIP manner, uh things will be delayed. Um, you know, some of these projects are aren't all these vehicles. Some of them are are state and uh federal obligations. And then, you know, again, some of our our CIP was partially funded um for phases. And those partially funded CIPs uh in fiscal year twenty-one, you know, they they won't be completed in the upcoming year because we'd be taking all of our our CIP money and gearing it towards uh very aggressive uh roof. Uh, you know, here's, and I just kind of want to uh show that, you know, there's, there's a lot to, there's a lot to Enfield that's going on. Here's just a sample of, you know, some potentially impacted CIP if this was the approach plan. There's, there's things with turf replacements. Um, there's, you know, UST removals across town. There's, there's boilers, there's pool equipment, there's uh Orlando Drive, there's Kimberly Drive. There's, there's other things on the schedule that are coming up the up in the upcoming fiscal years that we'd like to do uh on top of, you know, roofs. Um, and and I just wanted to kind of show, you know, uh, you know, some things that could potentially be impacted if this was the approach given without, you know, uh a mill rate increase to kind of compensate that extra spend. And, you know, uh, I think, you know, like I said, this is a really good primer to kind of see where we are, where we're going. And, you know, we're looking forward to engaging in very active dialogue with town council. And I know Joint Facility has been working very hard uh to kind of get these roofs on on the table and, you know, to address different roofing projects across town. And again, um, thank you for having me this afternoon or this evening, rather, and um I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it. Very well done. And again, thank you for hanging in there. Appreciate it.
No problem.
I will, I will open up the questions again. Left to right is Counselor Sparazza. I know he's having some connectivity issues. Well, we count Counselor Riley.
Um, I'm all good. Thank you, Jeff. Did a great job.
Counselor Mangini.
Thank you for putting together a well um thought-out presentation for us.
All right, Deputy Mayor Suzak, you have the floor.
Oh, first, Chris, thank you for all the kind words and the second, Jeff, great job. I mean, yes, very disappointed. We did not go to referendum. I really think that on something this important, it's been kind of pushed down the road. We really needed input from the people. Um, this is just the tip of the iceberg on what needs to be done. This is the thing you do before you do anything else in a building. If your roofs are leaking and your roofs are marginal, you can't do anything else. I mean, the the amount of property that this town owns is, you know, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming the maintenance and things that we have to do. And uh through the rest of the fall, um, Jeff's gonna be a a frequent visitor to the council because the council at this point has some really big decisions to make. And we are gonna come forward to, you know, offer you some properties that can be repurposed and probably put back out on the market as we consolidate. Even in the age of COVID, we still have room that we could consolidate. And uh Jeff doesn't have any of those in our prime, you know, presentation of what we need to replace and to do things with. So everybody patient, hang on to your seats because there's a lot of things that need to be done in Enfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Suzak, for everything. Thank you. Counselor Mueller.
Thank you, Jeff. Great presentation. No questions.
Thank you. Counselor Hemler.
Um, Donna, thank you for your passion with the, you know, with the roofs here. Um, and and Jeff, great job with the
Somebody has to care about the roof.
Um, great job, Jeff. Um, Chris, I I was wondering if maybe you could take his presentation, isolate it and put it on the website because this is something that we really need to get out to the public and just keep pounding it. It's very, it is very important and we need, um, you know, it always takes time to get things out to the public. So I think starting now is smart.
I I concur, and it really is like one of our special reports, so we will do that tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bosco.
All set.
Jeff, two quick questions.
Sure.
A, in your analysis, when it comes as we move forward, is there material that's environmentally friendly or, you know, preferred where we can get other grants other than state reimbursement to do the roofs? Is that, you know, so I I again, I if we selected a particular contractor.
I I don't want to interrupt you, Mike, but when you get other stuff, it just goes against the um mount that you get back from the state. The state is really specific when you get grants that if you're getting seventy some seventy percent reimbursement and some other money comes in from someplace else, they change how the
They're reimbursing, okay, got it.
I I know. It's a really good thing to do, but.
No, I didn't know. Fair question.
Absolutely. And just kind of echo in on what Deputy Mayor says, when when you deal with um the state with the Office of School Construction Grants, and if I mis-said their their name, it's very close to that. Uh, they have ex uh very stringent guidelines uh that we have to follow with no wiggle room. And they 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 will either allow or not allow. And that's part of these uh, you know, issues with uh multiple phases, especially in the BOE properties. Every year, they want to see that plan and re-approve it. So we're going with the same draw, unfortunately, the same drawings. Then we have to pay an architect to recertify or else the state won't even look at them. And then they want to see another, the same analysis, the same stuff. So it's all these little costs that really eat away at what we could buy.
Right. No, it makes sense. So and and if we go, hopefully go to referendum next year, can we build in, so and and this may not be a question you can answer. So part of that sort of two million dollars that we could put into a sinking fund to address some of the, you know, the ongoing maintenance, develop a, you know, plans, those sort of things, could that be part of a referendum? So it's just, I mean, I'm just using round numbers. So say we were gonna put ten million dollars to fix XYZ roofs. Add two million because we're gonna have it in a sinking fund to be able to address whether it be the municipal roofs or the could that be part of a referendum?
Mike, that's really, that's really beyond, uh, I think the the Bailey work. John Wilcox, but you know, I brought him in. He sat through this presentation. He actually is talking to Bon Council about this plan, and that is something that we will direct to him to review.
No, no problem. Fair. I didn't know if you could answer. No problem. No problem. And again, you know, Jeff, great presentation. And this is exactly, you know, we, it's, you know, it goes back to January when Chris and staff had, we had that meeting. It seems so long ago when we laid out all our capital projects for the next five to ten years or so. And this is what we need to continue to do. I I think Council Counselor Hemmer said it, Hemler said it right. You know, this is information that people need to understand. Look, this stuff isn't cheap, A, and B. We are, we we need to make the investment to get our buildings up to code, to keep them up to code and to make them safe for our residents and for our employees.
And Mike, like, like I've said, I I'm a simple guy that it's like your house, right? Nothing lasts forever, not your roof, not your, you know, uh, you know, your driveway, your furnace, perhaps, you know, your washer and dryer. The key is having a plan and recognizing and understanding what your obligations are. And I think this council was extraordinary and and listened to say, look, we really need to know what the problem is so we can come up with a solution. One thing I'm struck by, Jeff, and while we were so happy to get him, is you didn't hear him talking about two or three months out or two or three years. He's looking to twenty to thirty years. And that's what we're trying to do for all of our buildings, you know, for all, every single building and and the schools, the part that we're responsible for, so we can identify and council can come up with a real plan, a long-range plan, and then in each budget to address it. And until you really get it, you you, you know, your hand around what those issues are, you can't do it properly. And I think Donna said that for too long. We kicked the can down the road. We didn't look at the long term. And I think really we've made huge strides in progress in doing it. Tonight is an indication of that. So it's it's the beginning of the discussion. As I said, it's a primer. I know we're gonna be talking about buildings, what we're keeping, what we're leaving. Jeff is also working on boilers and and uh, you know, painting and windows and a lot of more of the mundane things. So we have a blueprint that it doesn't matter who your manager is or who's the council, you know, what particular council. You have a blueprint to say this is what we need to do ni- this year, what we need to do in five years, ten, so on and so forth. So I think we've made great strides in doing that, and I thank you all for your help.
I agree. Well, I mean, Jeff, Jeff, great presentation at the uh Deputy Mayor Suzak, the Board of Ed, other counselors and other, the residents on the joint facilities. I know you folks have met, I think, once every Thursday or once every other Thursday throughout the entire pandemic. So that process has never stopped. And um, again, we'll hopefully as we continue to pull out of this, we can continue to address these much-needed, you know, projects that have to get done. You know, Jeff, I will, anything else? I mean, I appreciate you sticking and hanging in there a long meeting. But again, very well done, and I just want to make sure you had the last, last word.
No, I, again, thank you for uh having me on and kind of going over this presentation. I know the Joint Facilities Committee has been working very hard over the last a few years to get these uh roofs presented. And, you know, I was just happy to, uh, you know, give a a another idea outside of a referendum with CIP. Uh, and kind of, you know, again, um, like the Tom Andrew said, just kind of prime the bulb on, you know, where we are, where we could be and and different uh scenarios to get there and get the conversation rolling. So again, just thank you for your time and hearing, uh, you know, what I had to say. Thank you very much.
And and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, I thank Donald Nunes for his input a- and uh cooperation and also for him after interviewing Jeff, saying this guy's a home run. We better hire him.
Very well done, Donald. Very well done.
Chris, I appreciate that.